I didn't hear any announcements. Can you give me a thumbs up if it worked? If not, I'll wait.
This is Manny upstairs. I've started the broadcast, so we are running.
I see fingers telling me to wait one second. We can do that. All right, I see the thumbs up. Good morning, everybody. This meeting is called to order. Good morning and welcome to the City of Boynton Beach City Commission Workshop Meeting. Today's Saturday, June 25th, 2022, and the time is now 10:08 a.m. These workshops are held to allow the City Commission to have extended discussions, to explore ideas and their implications on a topic of our choosing. The topic of today's workshop is building height. Now, unlike a regular City Commission meeting, there are no ordinances or resolutions before us to vote on this morning. Therefore, no official action can be taken. This is a time for us to learn, to discuss amongst ourselves and our staff, and for us to explore ideas. As with all of our meetings, the rules of decorum and civility will be enforced. Commissioners must first be recognized by the Chair and not interrupt the Speaker. Public comments must be addressed to the Commission as a whole and not to any individual on the days or in the audience. Displays of rudeness, insults, or personal attacks are strictly prohibited, and disruptive behaviors from the audience are likewise strictly prohibited. If you are asked to leave for any reason, you will not be readmitted to these chambers, so please govern yourselves accordingly. City Clerk, please begin the roll call.
Mayor Pen Sorga?
Here.
Vice Mayor Cruz?
Present.
Commissioner Turkin?
Present.
Commissioner Haye, absent. Commissioner Kelly?
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you, City Clerk. In the absence of Commissioner Haye, I'll lead us in an invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. So let's all stand for invocation and the pledge. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day, this opportunity, and the blessing that you have brought into each of our lives. We ask that you guide us as we come to learn and explore and work together for the betterment of our citizens and the city as a whole. Guide us and lead us to what is best and what is right. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to their republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Moving on to agenda approval, additions, deletions, and corrections. If there are no objections from my colleagues, I'd like to add public comments pertaining to today's topic after item B. So that would be right after the staff presentation. And the way envisioned for this meeting to proceed is that we'll hear the presentation first, of course. I'll open the floor to any questions and comments from my colleagues here directly about the presentation. Afterwards, we'll proceed to public comments, and then we'll come back to us for any final comments and questions. All right? Is there any objection or any additions to that? May I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Second.
If a motion is second, all those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed say no. The ayes have it. The motion is approved unanimously. All right. Staff?
Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. My name is Amanda Radigan. I am the city's Planning and Zoning Director. As the mayor stated, this workshop came at the request of the Commission to further explore heights within the city. Today, there are a few different things we're going to talk about. First, we want to discuss the factors that shape the city. Things like dimensional standards, transit-oriented development regulations, and general factors. We'll then look a little bit deeper at the City of Boynton Beach. We'll do a review of history and how height has been revised within the city. We'll look at current regulations as they stand today. And we'll also look at heights, the structure of height, and how it is distributed within the city currently. After that, we'll do a height comparison. We'll look at some other cities within the county. And then we'll review different considerations, both legal and non-legal. And at the end, we will look at examples to help lead the discussion. So first off, factors that shape a city. These list of factors have everything to do with the history of the city, the size of the city, the current population, population growth and trends, and a myriad of socioeconomic factors. The current income levels, employment, education, and access to amenities all help shape your city, and the goals associated with the socioeconomic factors as well. The redevelopment vision and goals of a city. The longevity of the current redevelopment efforts. The specific efforts and trend of how redevelopment patterns has continued. The consideration if a downtown or a TOD is within the current vision of a city. And the compactness or not compactness of a city and its TOD or downtown. The other area would be the economic development goals. Business viability. The goal to attract new businesses, industry, or office spaces. The creation of a destination. And of course, also housing affordability. Moving away from the socioeconomic factors, there's also a slew of dimensional standards that are designed to work together in order to help shape a city. These dimensional standards include height, FAR, uses, density, and setbacks and step backs of the building. And I'll describe a few of them in a little bit more detail. On the upper right corner, FAR, which is floor area ratio, essentially is the capacity that is allowed to be built on a site. So your FAR is usually measured in a number, a fraction or a whole number. In this example, an FAR of two would mean that you can build two times the size of your site. So you would see here the entire lot is built in two levels. That same FAR could produce this second option here, which is four stories built on half a lot. And again, in this next option, eight stories built on a quarter of a lot. These three options have the same FAR. Density. Each one of these diagrams shows the exact same density, organized differently within a lot. So you can see the one in the bottom right would be the lowest height, but the most area coverage. And the other extreme, which would be the top, the top diagram showing the highest height, but the least coverage on the ground floor. And lots of different variety in between. The other option would be, I'm sorry, the other standard would be height, step backs, and step backs of the building. The way the building forms and allows for views and step backs has a potential to drastically change how a city is perceived at the ground level or the pedestrian level. This diagram shows that these two buildings are the same volume, but can be shaped differently. So for example, this red area is relocated to this blue area. Another example of that would be this diagram for step backs, meaning you have a maximum height at the street level or pedestrian level. Then a step back in the building, which moves the height away from the pedestrian scale, and then it goes up to whatever your maximum height would be in the zoning district. All of these different standards work together to help create what we see as our, as our city. Moving on to transit-oriented development. TOD was developed in the 1990s by Peter Calthrop, and it was a product of the environmental sustainability movement. Essentially, TOD is the type of development that includes housing, transportation, commercial components, and pedestrians. The goal of a TOD is to create a low-carbon lifestyle. People who live within a TOD are about 85% less likely to use a car than if you don't live in a TOD. That is the basis for this type of design. The overall timeline on how a TOD progresses is the diagram that you see at the bottom of the screen. Before the plan, you have a diagram showing just nothing on it, an ordinary street grid. You create a TOD plan. There is public improvements near the station, which I would say is probably where the city is currently within our TOD track. And we'll discuss our TOD when we move into the city's specific standards. And then the next step would be partnerships and improved amenities. We've also done part of this. Our town square, the green that we've built, would also fall into partnership and public improvements. And the last is the private development that comes in to build the private components of your TOD. Continuing, the principles of a successful TOD, and this is cited directly from the RTA, would be first, medium-to-high-density development. And this is actually specific to each city. So medium-to-high-density really means that it just has a higher net density than the rest of the city. Medium and high is relative to each city. The second principle is a mix of land uses, again, having lots of different components in a compact area. Third would be a high-quality pedestrian-oriented environment. Fourth, an active, defined center, which is usually around the transportation. Fifth, limited and managed parking. And then six, public leadership. So now we'll move into a little bit more about Boynton Beach. So this first exercise is just a general geographic organization of the city. You'll see the first thing that comes up is I-95 and the CSX rail line. This is the rail line which Tri-Rail runs on. Next, you'll see the FEC railroad and Federal Highway. These are the two main arteries that go through our city. From 95, Boynton Beach connects 95 and that rail to Federal. And then we have Ocean Avenue that connects from Seacrest directly to the ocean. We also have Woolbright that has a similar connectivity as Boynton Beach Boulevard. It connects the two main arteries. This diagram starts to inform where a TOD may be formed or where a city would locate their downtown. It is at the intersection of their main arteries and viable transportation. You can see the secondary node or intersection. And it's secondary because it doesn't have the prominence of transportation that the primary node has. Starts to self-form around Woolbright and Federal Highway. And you also have a sort of synergy between these two nodes because they are generally close geographically. And you can see the dashed line that came up. That circle represents the city's current TOD area. After that, you have the kind of tails of Federal Highway that are a different geographic area than what is in pink. This is lower dense. It's the step down, less intense than our downtown area. We have the connection from 95 to our downtown, which again is a very different geographic setting. It is more of a progression to downtown and is meant to build to the entry of the city's downtown. And we have a little bit of an overlap that we call our cultural district. This is also our kind of public square. This is where Town Square is. This is where the green is. We have our neighborhood, the heart of Boynton. And then lastly, we have the industrial area, which is to the west of 95. This diagram helped to inform what we currently know as our CRA districts. If we move the conversation further west in the city, we can continue Boynton Beach Boulevard, continue Gateway, and see the connection form from Congress, which connects these two intersections. This creates three other areas of note. The first area to the north would be the intersection of Gateway and I-95 and the CSX. This is the location of our current Tri-Rail and a potential TOD in the future. Then you see again the intersection of Gateway and Congress, along with the intersection of Boynton and Congress, and the connection between those two. Currently, this is acting as our commercial thoroughfare in the city. So now we're going to go over the redevelopment planning over the last 20 years. So in the year 2000, the maximum height was 100 feet and the maximum density was 40. In 2000, there were public workshops held to create the Federal Highway Redevelopment Plan. In 2001, that plan was adopted. In 2002, there was an LDR update to implement the changes that were recommended in that redevelopment plan. 2002 was the year that the city adopted mixed-use high and mixed-use low. This was the first adoption of heights as we see it today, which is 150 feet in the core. In 2004, SMU, which is our suburban mixed-use, was created to allow mixed uses in the western area of the city along Congress. These heights by right were 55 feet, and there was a built-in conditional use to allow height to go to 75 feet. This was the first distribution of mixed use within the city. In 2006, the Boynton Beach Boulevard Corridor Plan expanded mixed uses along Boynton Beach Boulevard. So this plan created a progression from 95 to downtown, and the intensities were lowest at 95 and the highest when it met the downtown. In 2005, there were public workshops held again to update the Federal Highway Plan. In 2006, the update was adopted. 2006, that same year, later that year, was another distribution of mixed-use heights and densities. This split our current mixed use, which we just had was high and low, and created MUL 1, 2, 3, and H. And as you can see on the diagram shown here, this is straight from that updated plan. It allowed for those uses to spread further along Federal Highway. So this darkest purple is downtown or where our TOD is. The secondary node, which is the Woolbright and Federal node, is the second darkest color. And then the connection between the two. For reference, the southeast corner here is the construction of Riverwalk. Catty corner to that was known as Los Ventanas and currently One Boynton. And 500 Ocean is right about here. In 2016, there were a series of public workshops held to consolidate the CRA plans. The effort was primarily to combine all of the different redevelopment plans that have been drafted into one consolidated plan. In 2016 and 17, there were LDR updates to further break down these zoning districts. It added MU4, which was another step underneath our maximum of 150 feet. And this distribution of height and density allowed for, again, lower heights than our maximum to be allowed in our mixed-use 4 district. So now we're going to look at current height regulations and where our height is located. In this diagram, you could see everything that is the lightest green is below 55 feet. You can see just by this diagram that the brighter colors are located in our general downtown area, and we will zoom into that. But for reference, also at the Woolbright node, those two orange dots right here are the two projects that we just spoke about, Riverwalk to the south, One Boynton to the north. So looking at it closer, you can see the brighter the color, so the red represents the allowance of 150 feet, not the proposal of projects at 150 feet. So everything that is shown on this diagram is already approved, and projects that have been approved within these zoning districts don't necessarily meet the maximum intensity permissible. For example, this red box represents 500 Ocean. They were permitted to do 150 feet. 500 Ocean is 60 feet tall. Broadstone, again represented by this area right here, shown in red, was permitted to do 150 feet. They are currently proposed at, I believe, 87 feet. The villages at East Ocean represented right here. Again, with that zoning district allowed to do 150 feet. However, their proposal, I believe, is somewhere between 80 and 90 feet at its maximum height on Boynton Beach Boulevard. We do have two projects. These are the oldest within this area, within the redevelopment of the city. Casa Costa and Marina Village. Both of those projects are somewhere around 140 to 150. These are the two tallest buildings within the downtown. Shown in black here are all of the projects that are either approved, under construction, or vested. So let's take a look at what's left. So this is Town Square, represented by this black box here. Again, an approved project. We have the villages shown here. The CRA plan does show an intensification between these two projects. It would allow up to 75 feet within this middle block. Again, with restrictions and step backs in the building along Ocean. So anything along Ocean would be limited to that 35 feet with the rest of the height stepped back. This red box here is the project currently known as Pierce Group, 115 Federal. Current discussion with the CRA board. Again, planned to go up to 150 feet based on their zoning, however, proposed much lower. I think the proposal's currently around 80 feet also. This yellow box here on the southeast side of Woolbright and Federal is the Publix Plaza. Again, built, so we didn't, I didn't color it black as approved because there is some notion that it may redevelop even if it's not within my lifetime. And then we also have the two blocks that are south of 500 Ocean. Currently, they're only allowed to do 55 feet. The CRA plan does propose a slight intensification to a mixed-use medium land use, which would allow up to 75 feet in height. So this is current regulation right now of our mixed-use districts. SMU and MU1 have the same height allowance of 55 feet. The difference is where these zoning districts are allowed. SMU is generally along Congress, and MU1 is generally in Federal or the east side of the city. MU2, 3, and 4 progress in intensity from 65, 75, up to 100. MU4 is a zoning district currently at the secondary node, which is One Boynton and Riverwalk. Then MU Core is the most intense zoning district allocated only within the downtown TOD, and that allows up to 150 feet. Okay, so next we're going to go into a height comparison. This is a general snapshot of the cities that we'll go into a little bit more detail. We'll look at Jupiter, that has a maximum height of 60 feet, all the way down to West Palm Beach with a maximum height of 308 feet. To the right, you can see a couple of notes on where their height is located. Generally, heights are usually around creating a downtown, a TOD, or a destination. You can see there are some exceptions. Jupiter's main goal within their area was to preserve their village inlet. West Palm Beach's main goal was to emphasize an urban core and create a transportation-friendly environment. So first, Delray. Delray's maximum height that I was able to find is 85 feet. Their 85 feet is permitted in a zoning district called Emrock. This is their mixed-use district. It stands for Mixed Residential Office Commercial. This area is the diagram shown to your left. It is along Congress and 95. Second, they have, excuse me. The second highest we've been able to find is some overlay areas on Linton, which is a commercial corridor that allow heights up to 60 feet. And then the lower heights in the city are the downtown city's historic Main Street, as we all know it, Atlantic Ave. Atlantic Avenue has a preservation, limited height area. For all of the structures that front Atlantic, they're allowed to do a maximum of 38 feet. Anything beyond the building that's fronting is allowed to go up to 54 feet. So that is generally the dark area highlighted to the right. I'm going to go back one. You could see it's all of that purple area shown in the downtown area. So it does spread much further than just Atlantic Ave. Second, we'll look at Palm Beach Gardens. Palm Beach Gardens allows up to 150 feet within an employment overlay. That overlay is generally located along 95 on the east side. Most of the other districts within the city are 60 feet or below. However, they do have a height waiver for all planned developments, which essentially means if you're doing a planned development, which for example, all of the mixed uses within our city are, there are waivers to height, eliminating the strict top that would be required underneath the zoning district that they are building under. Boca Raton has 140 feet allowed within their downtown area. And they are also allowed to do another 20 feet of non-habitable space. For comparison, the city has what we call a height exception. That extra 20 feet that Boca has of non-habitable space would need to be approved in Boynton via a height exception. In Boca, they have an allotment built in that they are permitted to do. This general area is highlighted in that black box also. Generally, it's everything in green that you see in that area. They also have heights of 85 feet within their planned industrial districts and planned mobility districts. They also have a village center, which allows up to 72 feet. The diagrams to the left that I showed earlier come The diagrams to the left that I showed earlier come straight from the Boca downtown zoning districts. And they are, they allow the volumes of the building to be re-proportioned to go up thirty-three percent, I believe, above the zoning height. So as long as the capacity of the building stays the same, they can make the building smaller at the base and taller by thirty-three percent. Jupiter. Jupiter has the Indian Town Overlay, which allows sixty feet plus fifteen feet for a maximum of seventy-five feet. This is generally located along Indian Town Boulevard. And they also allow planned districts to have the same allotment, sixty plus fifteen for seventy-five feet max. Their medical center district generally allows for fifty feet. Certain uses, including hospitals, are allowed to go up to eighty-five feet. Boynton Beach. So Boynton Beach's maximum height goes between a hundred and a hundred and fifty feet. That's represented by the two squares on the right side or the east side of the city. And the hundred and fifty is allowed on the north and the hundred is allowed on the south. The north area where the hundred and fifty feet is allowed is consistent with the city's planned downtown and TOD. SMU is allowed to do fifty-five feet. That is allocated along Congress. It includes the Boynton Beach Mall's redevelopments. And there is a provision that allows twenty extra feet if a conditional use is approved by the city commission. Some other interesting things that we found as we reviewed cities codes were that Deerfield actually has no dimensional standards for their TOD. They allow their planned districts to be presented at the best design and approved by the city commission and staff. Downtown West Palm Beach allows between ten and twenty-five stories with a maximum height of three hundred and eight feet. And Pompano Beach has this interesting standard. They have a maximum height of a hundred and five, but they allow for what they call a slenderness provision, which allows the building to be half as wide and twice as tall. The idea behind that provision was to allow for views to be seen along the ocean. This provision is in an area that they have fronting the ocean. So now we'll talk a little bit about considerations. So the first consideration would be about economic development and the desire or not to have a TOD. Generally, for a TOD to be successful, rooftops are needed. They are needed to make businesses viable when businesses site and look for real estate and look for sites. One of the first questions they'll ask is how many rooftops are within a certain area? And is that enough rooftops to sustain their business? Rooftops and jobs are needed to establish a commuter rail station, and we'll go into a little bit more on that on the next slide. Land value, tax base, operational value, and construction costs are all economic development considerations. The impact on housing affordability. Generally, housing affordability in its simplest way is supply and demand. If we have more supply, the understanding is that prices go down. If we limit supply, demand goes up, prices rise. So for the TOD and rail station, if it's desired, back in about two thousand and six, there was a study done by FDOT and the SFCC that stated that Boynton Beach would be a neighborhood station. And that's simply a classification of a type of rail station. Along with that station classification are certain goals. The goals that were sent to Boynton Beach were that a station area will have between three thousand and five thousand residential units within their station area. Currently, the city has approximately eleven hundred and seventy-three dwelling units within their station area. The station area is one quarter mile from the proposed station. Another goal set forth in that document is that the employment in the area will be between twelve thousand and eighteen thousand jobs. Currently, within the station area, we are at about fifteen hundred jobs. If we look at the whole TOD, which is the half mile, we are at about twenty-three hundred jobs. The next consideration is about compactness. Is a desire to have more units, more height, more FAR in a compact area, meaning a smaller area? Or is the preference to spread out the height, intensity, and FAR over a larger area? So the next section is legal considerations, which our attorney, Michael Cirillo, will cover, and then I will come back to talk about some examples.
Good morning, Mike Cirillo is to the attorney's office. Next few slides is just an overview of some legal processes and some issues to consider. The first slide discusses the amending the comprehensive plan. As you know, all development starts with the comprehensive plan. Everything flows from that. So if you're going to consider any type of amendments to your code, you always look at the comprehensive plan. In order to amend the comprehensive plan, it requires two public hearings of the city commission. In between those two public hearings, the plan proposal is submitted. There's a, there's a quick review and there's a standard review depending on the type of amendment, but it goes to other agencies for consistency with other plans, regional and county. So that first hearing is called a transmittal hearing, and then it comes back to the city after that review is done for a second public hearing, which is the adoption hearing. What's different is there's an example there. A small-scale land use amendment was changed a few years ago for smaller projects. If they meet the criteria, you don't have to go through that more formal process. It's basis, almost like a rezoning. You have two public hearings at our level. Next slide. Now, from the comprehensive plan, you create development regulations. Those are implement the comprehensive plan. Those have to be consistent with the comprehensive plan. They're adopted pursuant to ordinance. The local planning agency has to review it for consistency, and then the city, the city commissions the local planning agency. So you all take care of that when you adopt your land development regulations. They're done by ordinance. Some types of ordinances require two public hearings and more formal notice, such as if you're changing the list of permitted uses in a zoning district. Next slide. Now, there's some questions about timing when you make changes and when you can put it to effect. And so this is a general concept. I wanted to just, you know, go over in generally is what's called zoning in progress. But generally, unless a zoning change is pending at the time of an application, that application can proceed pursuant to the current regulations. There's the concept in law called equitable stoppage. If someone relies on something and expends time and energy and whatnot, it would be unfair to change the rules on them. But at the same time, cities have to be able to change rules. And if you start a process, if it's pending at the time of the application, the city may, it's not required, but may require those applicants to then comply with what may come out of that zoning change. Pending doesn't mean that you all have taken any action or discussed it. It could mean that staff is reviewing it, Amanda or Adam. But it has to be documented. It can't be a notion. Can't be, oh, I just had a thought or an idea. It has to be actually in process. Our code has a process, a formal process, if the commission ever chose to do it, where you can go adopt resolutions to declare and intend to make changes and whatnot. That formality is not necessary, but it is there for the commission to use if it wants to be more formal in a designation of zoning in progress. What's important to note is that it would not apply to changes of the comp plan. It only applies to changes if you're changing zoning, which is land development regs. And next slide. And that leads to a planning tool called a moratorium, which was, it's a, it's a valid planning tool. It's a timeout. This is the, the case that you have there actually was involved with back in my earlier days. The court reviewed it to see whether it was a valid use of the tool. As we said there, it's no emergencies required. It's basically if you feel it's an important enough issue that you need to require, have a timeout to keep things from coming in while you're reviewing it, you can put a moratorium in place. They've got to be a limited duration, just the time needed to study the issue and develop the regulations that you want to address it. Typically, my experience has been they've been about six months. They can be extended, but it's probably should try to do what you can do in six months because when you do a moratorium, it freezes people's abilities to do things in that area that's regulated. It must be for a proper purpose. And that quotes from the case, and it tells you the general planning issues that cities tend to get concerned about when they want to consider timeouts, you know, traffic, congestion on surrounding property values, demand of city services, infrastructure, et cetera. It requires a more formal process for the ordinance because if you think about it, when you do a moratorium, you're basically changing temporarily the list of permitted uses. So during that moratorium period, you can't do something. So it requires you all to go through the process of two public hearings and the more formal notice and whatnot. And this is the tool to use if you're changing your comp plan. You can't use zoning in progress and let people to continue. If you, if you're changing your comp plan and you think that port, that issue is important enough to take a timeout, the moratorium is available tool for you. It's not used that often, but it is used, and it has been validated by courts. Next slide. Burt J. Harris. Back until Burt J. Harris was adopted, when somebody wanted to complain that government action took their property, they had to prove a total taking that because of what the government did, there's no reasonable use of their property. That's a very high standard. So the Florida legislature came up with and adopted the Burt J. Harris, which provides that if government, generally, if the government takes action that reduces your property value and you meet certain criteria and you go through that, you, you may be able to provide a claim for damages. As I, as you see on the screen there, every, there, there's several defined terms up there. Each of those highlighted terms are defined in the statute. And it's analysis based on each instance of, of change where somebody is concerned that affects them. There's a formal process that has to go through. It's so fact-specific that I, you know, I've provided you with some examples from cases. There's not a lot because, quite frankly, a lot of times these things get worked out because part of Burt J. Harris is a process of notice and response and opportunity to go through mediation and things like that. But it does give property owners an opportunity to present their arguments to you that what you're doing is affecting the value of my property. And that burden should be shared by the public as a whole, not just the individual property owner, is the concept of Burt J. Harris. Next slide. So there's just a couple of examples. And literally two examples of where Burt J. Harris came into play on alternate altering zoning to eliminate a permitted use. And you can see how if someone had developed their site, say, as a cement plant, then you said you can't do cement plant there. They've lost value to their, their use, their vested use. A comprehensive plan amendment that by their terms applies to specific properties. So if you changed a plan to affect this lot or this specific item, then it has been seen to be a potential Burt J. Harris. Put that last one in there. It was a recent case in Boca Raton. The fact that the city didn't do something is not seen as a government action that would recreate, create damages to somebody. There was a development in Boca Raton where it was asserted that they count, that the city didn't do the rezoning that they thought they were going to get, and therefore they were damaged. And the court said not doing something is not action under Burt J. Harris. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. So the next section we'll talk about are examples for discussion. We're going to go over four different examples varying in the level of change. This first example is the most different than our current structure. This example with lower heights in mixed-use core from a hundred and fifty feet to eighty-five feet. Lower heights in MU four from a hundred feet to eighty feet. Considerations for this example. First, it's important to note that most projects have been, that have been built and approved are considerably lower than the permitted one hundred and fifty feet, with the exception of the two projects that we spoke about before, Marina Village and Casa Costa. Minimal in this, this example would have minimal impact as much of the land is developed and or has approved plans or vested projects. Property owners within mixed-use core and MU four may consider the reduction in height a-taking. Approved and built projects, including Casa Costa, villages at East Ocean, Marina, Ocean One, and Riverwalk may be construed as legally non-conforming. This may lead to lending problems, issues rebuilding after damages, and may be perceived as a-taking. However, number five, language can be crafted to counter some of these effects. Meaning, we can write in language that states if you were legally conforming before this date, he won't be construed as non-conforming. However, that cannot guarantee that all of these effects would be remedied as we are not in control of lending, banking, and, and those sorts of things. So number six, this example can be done via an LDR amendment. An LDR amendment would require approval of an ordinance. This ordinance would require P and D recommendation as long, as well as two hearings at the city commission. Another point to mention about this, it's probably also a valid consideration that we may want to amend the CRA plan to revision the downtown area a little bit, as this is fairly different from the existing vision in the CRA plan. Example B. Lower's heights from mixed-use core from a hundred and fifty to anywhere from a hundred and ten to about a hundred and forty-nine, anywhere within that range. Considerations for this example are very similar to the previous, except the only zoning district that is affected is mixed-use core and not MU four. What that means is MU four is generally planned at the secondary node, so the Woolbright area. Mixed-use core generally planned in the downtown area. So the difference between this example and the previous is the previous affects both nodes. This one only affects the downtown node. The rest of the considerations are the same. Example C shifts the direction a little bit. So example C removes some of the potential approvals of additional heights and intensity to other properties. Meaning, instead of changing the LDRs, we amend the downtown portion of the CRA plan to remove some of the planned intensity from certain parcels. So for example, if we had an area. So let's take, for example, this area. In the CRA plan, let's do this. So in the CRA plan, this area is shown to be planned to go to MU core, again, reflects as the hundred and fifty feet. We can, in the plan, remove this planned land use and make it, let's say, mixed-use medium. Because we are doing it in the plan and not in the zoning regulations, it removes a lot of the considerations that the first two talk about. As Michael Cirillo talked about, there is no action taken on the property at the time of the CRA plan. So this would be less likely to be construed a-taking as there has been no development rates given to a property. And we can do this in a few different areas. We called out some of the areas that are mixed-use high within this area. And then this area also, and this area is actually planned to go to mixed-use medium seventy-five. However, since these parcels are generally really small, there's no real assembly in this area. I'm not sure that that intensity could be realized here. So there also might be some opportunities to lower it, even if they're not at mixed-use core. So some of the considerations would be, again, that most of the projects are built considerably lower than a hundred and fifty feet. The full block assembly of one fifteen. The full block assembly of 115 is proposed to be mixed-use core, but currently at a height lower than 150 feet. Mixed-use core is a compact area located only in the downtown and the TOD. MU4 is a compact area located at the secondary node, and it is only within a four-block area. And amending the proposed future land use removes potential density and height, because the CRA plan is what staff would look at to recommend approval or denial of projects. So if we remove that consideration from the process, it will, it will change the way staff is recommending certain projects move forward. An example D is simply to make no changes. This example has the least amount of risk. And the considerations like we spoke about before is that mixed-use core is again specific to downtown and TOD. MU4 is specific to the secondary node in a four-block area. And most of the projects are coming in considerably less than 150 feet. I am here and available for questions.
I would like to make a quick announcement for our remote audience. We're having technical issues, and so the remote audience will not be able to participate virtually. But I'm going to give you my email address. If you have any comments, I can read them into the record. My email address is matosk, that's M as in Mary, A T as in Tom, O S as in Sam, k at bbf l dot U S. Again, that's matosk at bbf l dot U S. For any of the remote audience that want to make a comment, I will read them into the record. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much to both of our speakers, Ms. Radigan and Mr. Cirillo. And again, if you would like to make a public comment from our virtual group, please do so by emailing our assistant city manager, Catherine Matos. And we do apologize for the technical difficulties. So I want to open the floor now to questions and comments from members of the board first. And I know Commissioner Turkin, this was born out of a conversation you had. So I want to give you first priority on this.
Amanda, thank you very much. Thank you very, very much. Very detailed. This is great work. You should be very proud of it. And thank you for the research, Mike. Thank you very much.
My pleasure.
I know this is a tedious thing. So thanks for your due diligence. I did have a few questions. For the amount of dwelling units near this TOD district, does that include? That is existing dwelling units, correct?
Yes.
That does not include Riverwalk, Broad Zone, the Pierce, Ocean One, or the Villages.
So Riverwalk is not within the TOD, so that would not be allocated. If we consider planned units, they're not built in yet. We have approximately 500 to 600 within Town Square. I would say roughly 200 each for about three other projects. So we might get to another 1,400 units if all of the planned projects are constructed and built as planned.
Okay. And then when when we spoke, you know, the concern is competing for this TOD, correct? And you mentioned that we're competing with Delray, correct?
I'm not sure if competing is a right word. I would say I don't know if they would put both the station in Boynton and Delray. That would obviously be up to the RTA and and the the rider.
Right.
Companies.
Right. Okay. So with the example A, I guess this is more for Mike. Can there be language crafted? And I see some representatives for some of these projects here. Can there be language crafted to allow these site plans to continue? You know, because we don't want to, we don't want to throw, throw a wrench in y'all's gears, right? We want to, you have approved plans. You know, I don't want to take that away from anybody. So I just want to know what what kind of language can be crafted?
Yeah. Good morning. Again, yes, you could put language, and we could work with the planners, you know, things as effective date or when which projects, not by name, but by approval dates or something that this would apply to. You can provide for exceptions for, you know, say, you know, to to avoid a nonconformity, allowing rebuilding, allowing them to have those same redevelopment rights or repair rights as if the code hadn't changed there. So, you know, it's very hard to tell you the specific verbiage, but the concepts are workable.
And it can be done.
It can be done.
Okay, great. Because my number one concern with moving forward in any of this is liability to the city and the taxpayers. So I just want to make sure we can protect the taxpayers before we make that decision.
Well, yes, for the the one question you asked about the existing invested and whatnot, you know, of course, what you'd look, what you'd want to understand, and we would look at very carefully, is what potential impacts could have on properties that have those rights now that may not be ready to, you know, and that gets into what is a vested right? What have they done to promote that use and something like that? Then there's also maybe development standards or trade-offs that could be done if you can allow, you know, less setbacks or allow certain types of trade-offs or uses differently than you allow now to offset that impact of just reducing the height, for example, if that's all you're looking at. So there are ways to craft things, to to horse trade, for example, or to, you know, address those issues. I can never say for certain that nobody's going to say, oh, my God, yes, and here's my appraisal. But if you work with folks and they understand what you're doing and you understand what their plans are or their intentions are, you can, you can minimize that confrontation. And really, that's what the Harris bill is about, is is factoring those things into your decisions and working through those issues if possible.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yep.
I've sat down with Amanda a few times about this. I've done my research, so really, this works for you all. So those are all the questions I have. Thank you all very much. I do look forward to hearing from the public. I do, I do like example A as as far as a resolution. So I'd like to go ahead and let that be known.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Turkin. Commissioner Kelly, let's go to you, and then Vice Mayor Cruz afterwards.
Yeah, like, there's so few parcels left that are available in the area. And I, my concerns are on the legal basis. I know that language can be crafted to protect the existing properties. But when we're talking about so few land opportunities, it's nice to see these different examples, and I think it gives all of us a clear understanding of of different options. I, I like the idea that we could restrict individual parcels without having to make a global, go through the effort of doing a complete global height restriction, just because there's so few properties left. So it protects the city from legal ramifications, because we're not generalizing reducing height restrictions, but it allows us to control what parcels are left and available to be developed. And it gives us that, that restriction to control those parcels and without having to run into later on down the line if somebody has to redevelop and they find a, a way or loophole that allows them to come after the city. For example, possibly the land is sold because there's a, the building gets destroyed somehow. It gets sold somewhere in there. Then there's a loophole that would allow that new buyer to go after the city for restricting them if there's not proper language in place. So I worry about complete restriction when we're talking about so few land opportunities. So that's kind of my, so I thank you, Amanda, for the presentation. I think it really brings everything to a front, things that we don't generally talk about. But that's kind of my thought is that it was, it allows us to restrict what's left without restricting what's already there. And so those are my thoughts on that. But I'm, I'm open to what the rest of the commission has to say. I'm not, I just, those are my thoughts.
Thank you, Commissioner. Vice Mayor Cruz, did you have any thoughts or questions about this topic?
I still like to talk to Amanda and get more details on this. I see both perspectives. Traffic is definitely an issue, having potentially too many apartments and too much traffic. I do understand the public concern for that, and I do share that. At the same time, I want us to be mindful and careful with a potential legal taking, per se, where I would not be in favor of anything that could potentially get us into a lawsuit. I always want to avoid lawsuits. So I think that I need to maybe spend more time with Amanda and educate myself deeper in the subject. I think this presentation was very, very helpful. So thank you, and thank you, Mike, for presenting that and for giving us different opportunities. At this time, I'm not 100% sure of which way we would go. Again, I would be potentially in favor of doing something, maybe amending the CRA plan, if that is something that we could do without it being considered a taking. But I do want to educate myself further on the laws, the current construction. You know, we're a new commission, and there have been projects that were approved prior to us being elected. So I do want to look deeper into those. Thank you.
Thank you. First of all, I thought this was a very fascinating topic. This is more complicated than I thought. And when I sat down with staff, I see how everything is connected, and and a part of me couldn't help but to geek out a little bit. What's really important to me is, number one, we created downtown. I think that's important to all of us. When we have a downtown, you know, if you want to use the word competing, we compete with the other major cities. We want to have more restaurants. We want to make sure that we have more mobility. Things are more walkable. And I think when things are closer to each other, you don't have to drive everywhere. Now, I can tell you, I live in a gated community in the western side, and it takes me a long time. I can't just walk to the coffee shop or, you know, walk to anywhere else. I have to drive X number of minutes to finally get to anything. So I think having a downtown, one that's vibrant, one that's competitive, one that brings housing and affordable housing and workforce housing and businesses, I'm in favor of that. Now, on the flip side, you know, I, you know, had to concur with Vice Mayor Cruz. We've all heard it. I don't know who hasn't heard of it. There are concerns about traffic. You know, it's, we live in Florida, you know, people are driving everywhere. That's a reality. But I also know, because I've lived in places where it is more compact when the restaurants and the stores are next to where you live. I know that if you have that kind of setup, when you have a downtown, you can just walk to your convenience store. You can just walk to wherever you need to get to. That walkability is so important. So I do have a couple of general questions, and I don't need to ask it all now. The very first question I have for staff is, you know, when you were talking in the beginning of your presentation, you said that the projects along Ocean Avenue, for example, if not all of them, don't actually meet the height limit, right? They're not actually reaching up to the max, maybe with a few exceptions. Why do you think that is? You would think that maybe from a business point of view, they would take all the height, but they don't. Why do you think that is?
Thank you for that question, Mayor. My assumption would be that it costs to go higher and more vertical, and it may not be advantageous to do so, meaning the the development performa wouldn't accommodate the added cost of going up based on land values and projected rents and and sale prices.
All right. Thank you. Also, I think it was in your, I don't remember which slide number it was on. Slide number five. Could you, could we go back to slide number five when we were talking, when you were talking about FAR? You know, these diagrams I thought were really, to me at least, really interesting. We can see here that with density, and I know the topic of today's height is not density, but you can see how just the design alone can significantly impact the amount of open space. So Amanda, could you just tell us, how is FAR calculated? Because I see that these numbers are set. You know, what are those, how are they calculated? And are they set for the zones?
Yes, absolutely. So FAR is actually regulated in two areas. It is within the comprehensive plan and within the zoning districts. Most zoning districts have a maximum. Some zoning districts have both a minimum and a maximum. Areas within the TOD do have a minimum FAR also. And an FAR, as as I said before, is usually described as a number, a whole or a fraction, and it is calculated by your site area. So if you have, the easiest example to think of is one. If you have an FAR of one, you can build your footprint. And again, this is without all the other regulations. We're just talking theoretically FAR. If you have an FAR of one, you can, you can potentially build 100% of your lot in one floor. That's your allowable capacity. That same one, so again, this is this diagram right here. That same FAR of one could give you a multitude of, of products depending on other zoning regulations. So for example, if you have an FAR of one and your height only allowed for one story, this is the only option, right? If you have an FAR of one and you have a height that allows four stories, this is that same product. So you are allowed to go up four stories, and it's the same volume of the building that's permitted. And again, a middle option would be if you have two stories, you're allowed to build on half of the lot instead of the whole lot or the four stories. So it's a multiplier of your site, and the other regulations help configure how the building is set on the site. And it's probably also important to note that these diagrams are just showing built space. The open space could be a number of things. It could be surface parking. It could be green area. It is not, you know, just green space and building. It's everything that is not building is included in the other area, which is not your actual structure.
Understood. So if A, FARs are set and the size of a lot is set, so that building, what would you call it, capacity, usable surface area, number of floors, not necessarily number of floors, but the surface area is set as a calculation of those other two numbers. Okay, I'm seeing a head nod. Is that part of someone's property rights or development rights?
Yes, it is. Intensity and FAR and height are generally for non-residential. So when you think, and this is again my planner hat, I am not an attorney. But generally, when you think of density, you think of residential units. How many units are you allowed by right to develop? When you think about non-residential, so your commercial, your office, that's regulated by generally two factors. Your FAR, how much space I could build, and your height, how many floors can I build? So when I say things like intensity, density, it really means residential, non-residential. And there are different factors within your zoning codes that regulate the intensities of each.
Thank you for that. So if I understand you correctly, and I think this diagram somewhat says it, or more or less it's on the point, is that unless we take away someone's property rights or development rights, you know, our options really are are what we're seeing in this diagram. Given that the lot size is fixed, given that the FAR is fixed, that would mean we could either have like a, like the structures on the right side of the diagram, taller buildings that have more open area on the first floor, or shorter buildings that are fatter, but then they encroach on all those possible first-floor uses, including whatever it is, so surface parking, outdoor green spaces and all of that. So it's either tall and skinny or short and fat. That's kind of a crude way of putting it. So it's either tall and skinny or short and fat. That's kind of a crude way of putting it. But the only way to adjust that is to, you know, if that were not to scale down or scale up, would be we would have to take away some of that capacity from the building. Okay. All right. So I'll leave it there for now, because I want to hear more from others. I'm just trying to have a mental image in my head. Is there anything else, any follow-up comments from members of the commission?
Yeah, it's definitely something to think about, especially when we think of green space, how we want Boynton Beach to have sufficient green space, but we also don't want to take away property rights. So I think this is the reason why I want to continue to talk to Amanda, because I want to find a way for us to have a beautiful city where we have green space and at the same time not get sued, but also find a way to mitigate traffic, create a downtown core that has enough commercial space for the residents in the area to go downstairs and have a cup of coffee, and at the same time for enough residents in the area to be able to support those businesses and their mixed-use developments.
Before we proceed, could I just ask one more question for legal or, you know, or whomever wants to chime in? Could you help me just better understand what you mean by a taking?
It's just, when you, it is what the word means. I had something, I had rights, and you took some action, you approved something or whatever, and as a result, I have, I can't do the same thing I was doing before. And maybe there's a loss to that. And if there's a loss to that action, then that's the taking. So it's a quantifiable thing. It'll be based, it'll be a dollar amount.
So, you know, at the same time, we heard that most of the projects don't even reach that number.
Right.
So is it still a taking even though the proposal currently doesn't reach that number?
Well, and again, it gets to, again, certain types of legal analysis. I mean, the Burchett-Harris is the one that everybody looks at, because when you change a regulation just to lower height, you're not taking away the entire use of the property, okay? Which is the old standard for takings, where you've just rendered it useless. So now this is the middle ground, and that's why the statute has a lot of complexity to it, you know? You look at a specific item, you look at what the rights were of that person or that owner, and what they were intending to do, what they are doing versus, you know, and all those different factors come in. And so it's really hard to give you specifics on that, but you would look at it. And they also have to go through a step, you know? I think some, we were talking about, why didn't folks go so high? And Amanda answered, it didn't work for them financially, you know? So that's a factor. Perhaps when you take a regulation, it doesn't impact somebody, and they're not able to show damages, because they have to provide a surprisals under Burchett-Harris. So it's really fact-specific.
Okay.
I know it's clear as mud, and I apologize for that, but it's, you know, that's, it's something we worked through during the planning stage and just aware of, you know? We, from what I understand, is, you know, it's a smaller area, limited number of folks. There can be communication and understandings of what's going on and working with folks, if that's what the city commission wants us to do.
Okay. So even if it doesn't take away from their current proposal, but it takes away from their future ability, because they have that zoning, they haven't reached the limit, so there's room for them to go more. So it's not necessarily the building as it is today, or the proposal as it is today, but simply their option or ability to go higher, their right, if you will?
You could say theoretically, but really what happens is, okay, so you have these developers. They came in and they used the property for the best and highest use they thought was possible. So the fact that they might be able to do something gets closer to speculation, and that's why it's important to look at what that vested right is. It's not just what you're doing, but what you actually have made concrete steps to do. So, you know, it's not necessarily just because I could do something before, now I can't do it, I should get that benefit. It depends on what, if, you know, the factors that go into what they've done, when they've done it, why they did what they did.
Okay. All right. Vice Mayor Cruz, I saw that you had your hand up.
I'm going to open a whole can of worms right now.
Okay.
Moratorium. Can we go back to that slide real quick? Thank you. Okay. So, as we're looking at, and again, this is all theoretical, just for our education. I think you mentioned earlier that a moratorium could be put into place for a limited amount of time if the voting body believed that this was, you know, important or significant enough to take a specific amount of time to determine a potential cause of action or action per se.
Correct.
So my question would be, if the city, theoretically speaking, wanted to establish a moratorium, what would be the steps to do that? Would it be like a, like a voting twice for it? Kind of how we would do for other purposes? Or, and or how long would that take to implement? And what would be the timeframe for it? Would it be six months? Would it be?
To adopt a moratorium, you'd start, you would have to develop, first of all, the subject matter of it, narrowly tailored to whatever you're looking at. Say it's, you know, anything that affects certain sections of the comp plan or certain sections of your zoning code. Identify those, because you don't want to have a moratorium that impacts more than is necessary. So other projects can keep coming through, and other people can keep doing what they need to do. So that's the first step, is understand what it is, the goal. What is it changing and what you think you're going to change it to? Once you've got that, then it's a process where you would take it to get a recommendation from Planning and Development Board, and that it's consistent and whatnot, then it comes to you for two public hearings, two noticed public hearings. So it would take the same amount of time as once you start the adoption process for an LDR, but you have two public hearings on it. How long a moratorium can be? It should be as short as, it needs, the shortest period of time that's needed. If you were to direct administration and staff to make a specific change, and that change is known, and they can get it done in a shorter period of time, maybe you say three months or something like that. But a lot of times, when you do a moratorium, you want some study done, you need some legwork done, and that's why I've seen typically a six-month has been the longest, three to six months. And during that period, you're expected to complete your review, get some direction, and complete the adoption process for whatever you're doing. Now, if it's a comp plan, you have to start that adoption process sooner in that period, because it has to be transmitted, come back to the city, and that can take some time. But yeah, so the time to adopt it would be two commission meetings. And the time that it could last should, I would say typically three to six months, depending on what the recommendations would be from staff, based on what you want the city to change.
Thank you. And then if that were to happen, would that pause any current projects that are being proposed? Or what would be the effect of that?
Well, again, it gets to where are they in the pipeline? If they've got an application in, you would, you know, I've seen moratoriums stop applications, but you get a lot of pushback on that, and that's where the challenges have come in. I think WCI, that case, is where Coral Springs had included that. So your direction would be to staff, what is in the pipeline, and when should it take effect? Now, you can have it take effect as of, say, the first time you read it. So, because, you know, people know it's coming, and it's not totally unfair that they tried the race between first and second reading or something like that. But that would be something you tell us. What do you want it to impact? Things that are in the pipeline or things that have yet to enter the pipeline? And the second is more conservative. But, you know, that, again, that would come from you all, what it is you're doing, what's in the pipeline. All those facts would play into what you tell us to do. You're welcome.
Commissioner Turkin, did you want to?
No, go ahead.
No, I'm done. I want to move on to public comments unless you guys have final comments.
I just want to leave you guys with this. You know, we have options. The people, the taxpayers, the people who put us in office, you know, this is my district, are concerned about the infrastructure, concerned about the traffic. When we talk about we want a vibrant downtown, if we look to the south of us, we don't need height. So I have your vision, Mayor. I do. I think majority of the people that live downtown either work in one of those retail spaces or restaurants, which probably match the salary of Boynton, which I think we both can agree on needs to improve. And everyone else pretty much drives and leaves and works elsewhere. And that's another thing that we're going to have to work on as a body. So I just, you know, want to say we don't need height to be successful. We don't need it. You know, and I don't want to affect anything that is in the pipeline. We don't want to take anything away from anyone, but we do need to answer to the people. We do need to answer, you know, to the infrastructure, to the storm drainage, to the traffic. I don't know how these traffic reports keep getting approved, you know? And we need to take this in consideration, because once we make a lot of these drastic changes, we can't go back from that. You know, this is a way for us, again, to be proactive instead of reactive, which we decided at our city vision workshop, we wanted to be a proactive commission. So I'll leave it at that. And, you know, again, thank you so much, Amanda. And thank you, Mike, Adam. I really appreciate it, and the rest of city staff for coming on the Saturday.
All right. If there's no other, oh, I see Commissioner Kelly. Go ahead.
I just have one. I feel like we are, by opening this up and having this conversation, I feel like it's bringing us to, you know, we've, each of you have touched on the drainage issue, the traffic issue, those things. I feel like we are, we are almost asking and begging for an update on where the city is in future sewage projects, where the city is on traffic. You know, we want downtown to be vibrant, and part of that is that we, as a commission, need to know where the city is, so that as we are as a city and also as a CRA, when we approve projects or when we're looking at projects, we're comfortable with where the city is in our utilities projects and in our traffic projects and FDOT and whatever, whoever is maintaining that road, so that when we do look at these projects, we know, okay, we can approve this project, because we know in X number of years, we already have this other utility project that's going to fix the issues that are being brought up today that maybe the public just doesn't know, and we, you know, but we know because we're informed. So I think this also opens up that conversation for us to get a true understanding of what's upcoming for our downtown utilities-wise, what's upcoming for our downtown and our city traffic engineering-wise. I agree with Commissioner Turk, and I think we need to, we need to keep our downtown, our beachfront living small community, because it's, we're not going to be West Palm ever. We're just, it's not. I just want to look at the best way for us to do it as a city to protect the residents and protect our downtown. I think that we can likely find a happy medium that keeps, you know, keeps the vision of what we want the city to be, and also keeping it a place where people want to come. So I, those are just my last comments that I have. But I think that that opens us up to wanting to know, I want to know, where is the city on projects? What future products, you know, we see when it rains or with king tides? Where is the city in projects? What do we have coming up? I think the residents would appreciate having feedback and knowing that we're on it. We get the emails. We know the residents' concerns. We want to, you know, we as residents also want to know, you know, where the city is in that. So that's just right.
All right. That was an excellent point. Those are all things I want to hear as well from staff. Just to close this out, one second, Ms. Radigan. That led me to a follow-up question I'd like to pose to staff, and that is, what is the role of development projects in infrastructure? You know, when you build new buildings and bring in people, naturally, there are all these questions of infrastructure and traffic. What is the role of projects in that?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners, for those questions. I do, I can talk to some of these things, not all of them, specifically about new projects. The way new projects are approved is a process called concurrency. There are, of course, existing, I'm going to use the word issues, existing issues, existing challenges that the city has in possibly certain areas that maybe need to be corrected through city action. That's one kind of pile of things. The other pile of things would be the direct impact of new development. Any development that is approved goes through a concurrency review, and any impact that they have on city infrastructure, traffic, we'll talk about separately in one second, drainage has to be mitigated by that property. So for example, utilities. If the city is approving, let's say, 50 units on a piece of property, and the utility pipes are, and these are, I'm not an engineer either, but let's say two inches. I don't know what the right number is, very, very small, can't, cannot handle the capacity of those units. That property, that development, is responsible for upgrading infrastructure in order to make sure that the city has capacity that they are impacting. So cities are, I'm sorry, properties and development are kind of self-contained when it comes to concurrency. That is true of all aspects. I put a little asterisk next to traffic, because it's dealt with differently depending where you are. Traffic concurrency on some areas of the city are handled the same way. You have impact on roads, you are paying for impacts, which then go to improving road conditions, either to the city or the county, depending where you're building. However, there is what's called the TCEA, which is the Transportation Exception Area. That exception area is within the County Transportation Comprehensive Plan and within the City's Transportation Comprehensive Plan. This was a tool that was used as an anti-sprawl measure back, and I want to say about the 90s. And what it did is it accepted residential units from traffic concurrency. This was an effort to allow for compact development in certain areas. So the TCEA is generally the downtown area, and this happens all over the county. It's a measure to allow for compactness and not sprawl. Again, it has been in effect for a very long time, so there are certain things, like in certain areas, if you are building a certain amount of units, they aren't counting against you when it comes to concurrency. So this does a few things. As I think most of you have heard, we have approved a transportation mobility plan, which shifts how the city thinks about transportation. We could only widen roads in our downtown so much. And this plan looks at transportation a little bit more all-inclusively. So it talks about how we move people in different ways and not just cars. It builds on the need or desire to have a train station. It builds on micro-mobility, how we're moving other modes of transportation, bike lanes, greenways, walking, pedestrian facilities, all of those different types of moving people within what is generally the exception area, because the goal at the time of that area was, again, compact development. I hope that helps, and I didn't make it more muddy.
All right. Thank you so much. If there's nothing else from the members of the commission, I'd like to move on to public public comments. As always, individual speakers are limited to three minutes per meeting because this is a workshop meeting. Uh, comments must be germane to this particular topic at hand. And as always, this is not a Q and A, so we will take note of the items that are mentioned during public comments and will respond to them after the meeting. And again, for those of you that are online, uh, we do, we are having technical difficulties. So if you would like to, uh, provide a comment, you can email our Assistant City Manager, Catherine Matos. Uh, Catherine, could you just repeat your email one more time?
Yes, it's Matos, M-A-T-O-S-K at BBFL.us.
All right, thank you. And I've been informed that we're having another technical difficulty with the podium, uh, microphones on my right or in the audience's left, so please use this podium on the other side, all right? As, please approach the podium and begin when you are ready.
Well, I was going to ask for more than three minutes because I think this is a workshop and should, you know, be going four or five minutes. And Ernest is not in the crowd, so you're safe.
Susan, we're sticking with three minutes, uh, please begin when you're ready.
Oh, boy. Susan Oyer, 140 Southeast 27th Way. First thing on this is way too small, please make it legible. Just to update, Amanda did not give you the entire history. She forgot to tell you that back in the late 1980s, the residents of this city voted for a four-story maximum. It got approximately 93% passing rate. Um, the voters have told you they want four-story maximum. You all are, and not you specifically, but you know, the commission since then have repeatedly violated the residents' wishes and violated, I believe it's ordinance number 89-001, which it was the first one that came up the year after the election when the commission approved it. I've given copies to prior commissioners. So please include that in your thought process that the voters actually voted on this and approved it by an overwhelmingly large margin. So you all, you collectively, the commission over the decades have been violating this repeatedly. Number two, the public over and ever tells you they don't want the height. Please keep our city livable and with no concrete canyons and urban heat islands. And yes, I've brought that up repeatedly. I've given evidence over the years and the post, Palm Beach Post says, um, you know, quoted me on it. So please remember, we do not have enough green space. Look, for example, at 500 Ocean and 1 Boynton and what disgusting examples of architecture they are in our city. Next up is height compatibility. Make sure you keep that in mind. You should not be putting a one-story, single-family home that's currently in existence next to three-plus stories, which is what the R4 zoning allows for, which is what they're trying to force into neighborhoods where they go in and buy a bunch of houses, cluster them together and start sticking four-story apartments in the middle of one-story houses. Commissioner Kelly, I do agree with you on your ideas on going forward. Yay, you got me to agree with you. Um, number six, stop letting developers tell you that there are no condos funding available and that we can only have apartments. They will do what you tell them you want. Please stop letting them sucker you and tell you they can't do it. They will. You all consistently argue for workforce housing, yet you are taking away the first step of property ownership by doing nothing but apartments and not having condos. If you want it, they will give it to you. Um, far should be at the point five range, not one or over. That is definitely something we should be looking at. Water capacity, um, we know we have none because we sell off our water to all these other cities approximately nine or 10. So while they may be upgrading the sewer pipes, there's still not the water to push all this through, meaning sewage, and, um, provide water to all these places. And why did this stuff get billed? Um, and why didn't they go to the full height? As Amanda said, yes, they could have gone higher because I was one of hundreds of people out here protesting. We've had hundreds of people protesting for years against these building heights. That's why they don't go up full height. The citizens, the citizens of this city do not want this. And at what point are you going to stop listening to the developers who fund you and start listening to the residents of this city? You've said this for decades and we voted for it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next speaker, please approach the podium. And don't forget to say your name for the record. Could you, uh, the microphone just a little bit closer, please?
Boynton Beach, Florida. Uh, the presentation.
One second, I don't think it's on right. Amanda, could you double check?
Okay.
There we go.
Evangeline Ward, 1518 North Seacrest Boulevard, Boynton Beach, Florida. I am a native Boyntonian on the race here. And the presentation, the first thing I noticed she says economic development, okay? That's growth for what? And in the midst, we're going up, but we're not thinking about it's going to require extra policing. It's not, we're not thinking about it's going to require extra schools. It's not thinking about the traffic and everything. And I want y'all to know, look at Delray. Delray is a zoo. People don't have access. And then when you bring all of this stuff in, you bring in undesirables. And when you bring in undesirables, then we've got children hurt, we've got lives lost and everything in our downtown area. You got to think about schooling, you got to think about the police, you got to think about the fire department, and above all, our, uh, on Ocean Avenue, you can't make that four lane. So how people are going to get in and out? And it's good to go downstairs and get a cup of coffee, but I don't want to be sitting in a, in a building with 200 people trying to drink a cup of coffee. And then you got to get parked in the garages and all of these other things. And in the midst of everything, a city and the residents need to feel safe. And where we're going up and, and I don't know about y'all, but Florida, especially in this area, sand shifts. And when you start building and everything, we don't want a surfside here. We don't want things collapsing and everything because Boynton originally, I want you to understand, it's not, the soil is not great as y'all think it is because we used to have crabs all the way, all the time on the highway, walking around and everything. And that was in the fifties and the sixties. So we need to be very practical about what we're thinking. We're bringing people in, but are we really enhancing the city and making it safe? Because I don't know about nobody else, I live on Seacrest. I don't want it to take me a whole hour to get down to Publix to get my groceries. So we really need to think about, we can go up, but think about it, are we going to have enough that, you know, with a, a, a roadway? And normally when people move in, it's two families, a husband and a wife, that's extra two cars, if they got a child, a teenager, that's another car. So we really need to think about how crowded it's going to be in this one area. All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, next speaker.
Hello, I'm Tommy Sampleless. I moved to Boynton 24 years ago, uh, close, uh, to the hospital. And, uh, I wanted to get away from all the traffic in Boca. And we're turning into Boca and I don't like it. I have to thank Amanda for eloquently describing all the details of all the planning and development, but I, uh, I don't want to lose the vision of the forest by looking too closely at the trees. We have to look at our long-term picture. Do we want to look like Fort Lauderdale with traffic and high buildings and chaos? Uh, I don't think so. Boynton is a lovely community. I ride my bicycle most places I can reach from where I live and, uh, it's, it's a great community. And, and the more traffic there is, the more pollution there is, the more sewage there is, it's, it all decreases quality of life. And, uh, naturally, the higher the buildings go, all, all of that increases more. So I would just, uh, say, keep the vision. We have elected you folks, uh, you know, to keep that vision for us and thank you if you keep doing it.
More care, George. I'm going to invoke a name of the late, great Al DiMarco. Al DiMarco was the first CRA chairman when the CRA was created. Al had vision. People say, Al, you didn't do anything when you were on the CRA board. The reason was, he said, we've got to start with infrastructure. You can't just build without having infrastructure. And he said, look, we have to not look three to five years, we have to look 75 years down the road. And his plan got implemented. The reason Boynton has had so much growth over the years is because they followed that plan. Al was intimately involved. He was also a commercial realtor. Los Antonas was Al pushing the envelope. He had both sides of that deal. Gulfstream Lumber went to Riviera Beach because of Al. Kyle Riva brought in Los Antonas, a mixed-use concept because of Al. Now, I will tell you, living in this city for the last over 20 years, that there has been good growth and there has been bad growth. What we need to get back to is smart growth, okay? Now, infrastructure should always be a priority. Before you build it, you have to look at drainage, you have to look at sewage, you have to look at water, you have to do those things. And you have an excellent staff that looks at those things before they, before the thing can even move on. Compatibility, staff looks at that extremely, holds the developer's feet to the fire before it even gets to you guys, okay? I know because I was in the development community for over 19 years. I also served on our CRA board. I can tell you that you, option D is the best one because all the things in option D and how it is written have all been vetted with the public. These changes have always been vetted with the public. The downtown master plan has been revised three times in the last 20 years. Why? You need to adapt. You need to make sure that you're doing it right, that you're not making mistakes along the way. I want to commend our staff. We've had some great people on this staff. We've had positive changes on this staff. I can remember when click the screen say that word was no. He wanted to keep Boynton a bedroom community, would not even allow car dealerships in the city. What I'm getting at is go back to smart growth. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, and thank you for your comments. Next speaker.
Good morning. My name is Christy Ward, um, native Floridian. Um, Boynton Beach is my home for over 47 years. Some of the questions that I wanted to ask, many of you have already, um, asked them for me, uh, which was good. What I heard in the presentation was talking about housing affordability. Um, I have an issue with that because the thing is that, um, economically, the pay rates have stalled and the cost of living keeps continuing to go higher. So like when you try to bring things in, I noticed that even if they're trying to make it where things are closer, where you can, you can go downstairs and get something to eat. I used to live in Delray Beach and, um, everything was right across the street from me, but my rent kept increasing as I was living there, which I left and then I came back to Boynton. So the thing is, I think like what we have here, we need to try to fix and clean up right now because the thing is, it's kind of like with a car, if you, with, with hoses, if you replace one hose and all the other ones are not that good, the flow comes so quickly that all of that can't help the capacity of it and everything starts blowing out. So what we need to try to do is just go with option D, like just, let's pump our brakes for a minute, let's try to fix what we got going on because infrastructure and things like that, if we can't hold that capacity, if we can't deal with those things right now, trying to bring this stuff in is only going to make it worse for us. We're going to be like scrambling and our, running around like chickens with our head cut off, trying to figure out what we need to do. So, um, affordable housing is not there and it, and it won't be there until we decide that we fix that right now. So, um, it's, it's a good plan. It's a great plan, but we need to count the cost. Scripture says that we need to count the cost. So have we counted the cost of what, how this would affect us? And the question is, who are we trying to attract? What are we trying, what goal are we going for? Who are we trying to be like? You know, personally, we should try to be ourselves because Boynton Beach is great. You know, I go to Delray, I go to Boca, I go to Pompano, all these different places and their downtown areas are horrible. You know, you can't get anything in and out. You know, I'm a delivery driver, so sometimes what, why, I got to pay $10 to park in order to take somebody their stuff? That's ridiculous. So it's just like, and then here's another question. With, I, I think we need to try to look into this also because if we're trying to make it to that point, how many lives are being lost with pedestrians if they're, they're, that's a statistic we need to look in as well because once you start getting all these people walking all these different places, you know, those who, um, want to get points for driving and hitting people, that's something we need to look into. So I think we're good as we are.
Thank you. Next speaker. Begin when you're ready.
I'm Michael Weiner for the record, an owner of property in, uh, Boynton Beach, um, and also a zoning lawyer. So maybe I do speak with forked tongue, but let me get to it. Traffic. So a residential unit, uh, it's about six trips a day. A good convenience store is about six trips an hour. So the ice cream shop that you want is probably about 50 or 60 units in equivalency. Residential units do not create traffic. Building volume is not traffic. Good streets, about 20,000 cars per day. You're much better looking at signalization, left and right-hand turn lanes than all the extra dwelling units and all the extra height in your downtown plan. Canyonization. It's about, uh, 2,870 city blocks in Manhattan. You're talking about a node. You're about 16 square miles. This is an option or an alternative to what you have in the majority of your city. More than 95% of your city does not have height. It's a small node. There's not canyonization. It gives people an alternative. Density. If you're really for environmental sensitivity, then you have to look at density. It's an important tool. A suburban home consumes about three times the energy of a multifamily urban dwelling. Go take a look on Google. Let's talk about compatibility for a minute. I really, I really would like you to go and take a tour between Congress and Military Trail as you go up and down Palm Beach. Where are the most challenged neighborhoods, single-family neighborhoods in that area? It's in the middle of them, not a high building around them, not a gasoline station near them. There are many city blocks between these particular thoroughfares that have challenges with respect to their neighborhoods. And yet, take a look at some of the other neighborhoods. Everybody's talked about Delray Beach. There's a, a banker's row, itty-bitty cottages right behind City Place, thousand bucks a square foot. Take a look at, uh, Flamingo Park in West Palm Beach. Wonderful neighborhood, right behind the convention center. Compatibility, yes, if you were building a concrete plant, that's one thing, but a high building and single-family homes have, uh, coexisted together for more than 20 years and become vibrant and wonderful neighborhoods. I think if you take a look around, you will see that this is not what is going to, in quotation, wreck Delray, uh, wreck Boynton Beach. It didn't wreck Delray, it isn't going to wreck Boynton Beach. Study it hard and I think you'll see you have a good downtown plan. Thanks for.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello, Cortland McQuire, 506 Whispering Pines. Uh, thank you very much for having this community meeting and, uh, everyone that put it together, Amanda and her team. Member of the Planning and Development Board here with the city, um, also a member of the Arts, uh, Board as well. And, um, I think a lot of things were brought up today. Uh, it was definitely an educational process, I think, for members of the Board, uh, members of the community. So I, I'm going to just sort of highlight some things that I, I pointed out and I'll kind of give you my thoughts as to where we should go from here as a community member. We all want a vibrant downtown. I think, you know, development is important. It's just the right kind of development or blend. So I think that we all really want to have a destination, but what does that destination look like? I think there was some sort of vague or complex ordinances, uh, where it comes from the downtown and bleeds into the Woolbright Corridor. downtown and bleeds into the Woolbright Corridor. And from my district, that's where a lot of the concern is from the community members. The Riverwalk Project, although wonderful, looks to be very large on that particular footprint and it's sort of arrested the community as wow, what will come in the pipeline next? It just looks too big for the site. And how many of these will we have on the south corridor or bleeding into that zone is a lot of things that I think members of my community are interested in. There wasn't a whole lot of talk of green space. I think Vice Mayor brought that up. Thank you. There, as far as I know, as a member of Planning and Development, it's very vague or very low or both. So I think we need to look to update that verbiage. One thing that is very concerning to me, I own a business at a commuter rail station for 20 years, very high density in Bristle, Miami. I'm not sure exactly if this community is interested in having a commuter rail station in the heart of our city. It brings a lot of problems. Take it from me, and if we have one to the north and south, why do we need to go it alone? Not to mention, they're giving us protocols as we have to follow as a city. We should be leading that dialogue, not following it? I didn't hear a lot of discussion of historical preservation. These buildings that are being scraped down have historical purposes. How are we going to preserve them? Is there going to be some candle lit or some kind of benchmark as to what they deliver to the city? And also the Congress Corridor. I think we need to sort of squeeze the toothpaste over to the Congress Corridor. We have a wonderful one, more vibrant than to our south. How can we grow it even further? I think that based on all these things said, I think we should consider a second community meeting so we can communicate with our constituents and perhaps then consider further. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, my name is Mike DeBose, Boynton Beach property owner. Listening to today, as a property owner and someone who speaks to developers on a regular basis, we have a lot of confusion. We talk about the train station downtown and trying to meet those needs.
Could you speak into the mic?
We talk about the train station and trying to meet those needs and I believe Amanda said we're at roughly 1,125 units currently. We have another 1,400 units coming online in the pipeline within that quarter mile. If they were to get out of the ground, we'll be at 2,500 units and study shows that we need 3,000 to 5,000 units to attract that station. We need 12,000 plus jobs to attract that train station to qualify. When we tie the developers' hands with the red tape and we're using units per acre as opposed to say the floor area ratio, all of these factors and height restrictions again lend to tying the hands of a developer. It's why we see so many sites in Boynton Beach that haven't broken ground because it takes so long to go through the process. And here we are at, we have five projects approved. We can hope that they're going to get off the ground, but we're into the credit cycle. Cost of construction's gone up, lending has gone up, and the desire for people to, the appetite for a developer to come to Boynton at this stage, it's nonexistent. Reached out to the top three, three of the top 10 realtors in South Florida posted in the South Florida Business Journal. I sent them a package showing 60,000 square foot of office space on Federal Highway. None of them responded to the email. One called me and said, I just wanted to give you a courtesy call that this is something that we're not interested in. We'd be not, we're not interested in even taking the listing. It'd be a waste of our time, given the credit cycle, where we're at and Boynton. There's so much red tape already. Adding more red tape is only going to complicate it and it's going to leave us, all the dirt that's there today, you're going to be termed out and it's still going to be dirt, undeveloped. You really need to take into consideration what's happening to the developers when they come to planning and zoning and all the regulations that you're putting in front of them. It's stifling them. Our tax base is going to stay what it is today, virtually nothing without the help and the leadership of this commission. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, my name's Tyler Knight. I wasn't going to speak, but I am from Delray Beach and someone mentioned the four-story option and I can tell you, we exacerbated our situation with the four-story option. Let me tell you why. You're going to get these block-to-block buildings. They're going to eat away your green space. They're not aesthetically appealing. You're going to have squatters sitting on the sidewalks, dogs, where do you walk your dogs? They go there, leave their waste on the sidewalks, it gets smelly. You have congestion. And so I understand the people's concerns. Yeah, you know, you could say maybe 150 is a little strong on the height there, but I will tell you, the four-story option is only going to exacerbate any issues that you guys already have here. And plus, you guys are becoming a downtown now and you mentioned you want to be a downtown to compete with other downtowns. You don't want necessarily compete with other downtowns as much as you want to have a downtown. And by not allowing developers to come on in here and make things happen, it's not going to happen because it's a lot of money to do these things. And so just please keep that in consideration. Thank you.
All right. Next speaker.
Good morning, Jim Knight. He's the better-looking one of the two, as you can tell. He's tall and skinny and I'm short and fat. Anyhow, I've got to start working on that too. My wife keeps telling me that. I'd like to point out that I was sitting here, not in this room, but here back in 2006 when you were doing the study on the Federal Highway Corridor and so forth. And at the time, I was one of the property owners of where Walmart is today. And that was going to destroy the neighborhood as people came out and it's going to be the worst thing to have happen there and so forth. What it actually did, it promoted Seaborn Cove. They were able to get their financing because Walmart was built there. Did I want to see Walmart there? No, I wanted to sell to a mixed-use developer for about $4 million more, but that didn't happen. That created jobs. They are paying jobs and we do need jobs here in Boynton. As we speak to some of the projects and the height, the ones that took the advantage of them, Casa Costa Marina Village, those are for sale condo product. The other buildings we're talking about, One Boynton, Riverwalk, Broadstone, 500 Ocean, Town Square, Villages, The Pier, those all appear to be headed towards rental projects. The rental projects are not going to collect the rents in order to go ahead and justify going up and taking advantage of the height. So it's a question of, do you want to limit yourselves to just rental product because that's what you'll get more of? The TOD, if you really want to have it, and I think Boynton is a better location than Delray personally for the TOD. I think there's a number of reasons for that, but you have to be able to have the jobs in the area and the walkability and the residential units. My son was correct about the pushing the building out, becoming short and fat versus tall and skinny like him. If you look at the Aloft Hotel, there's a client of mine that built that in Delray and I get ostracized on a regular basis from the commission there because it goes from block to block because they were limited. You may look at another scenario that says, hey, if you're going to have that height, well then we'll limit the length of the building. So that does keep your open space. There are different creative ways. You don't need to put out a moratorium or zoning in progress or change the plan. You can make tweaks to it. I think the plan is a good plan that we have. It's been in place. You're finally going to get some of these projects. Hopefully they do all come out of the ground. Broadstone, which I was involved in, they're still working on their project right now and hopefully that comes out of the ground and gets built. I think these are smart growth for the downtown. And the last comment I wanted to just say is that in order to get the office development to the downtown at some point in time, you need places for those people to live. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Next speaker. Please begin when you're ready.
My name is Bill Morris. I'm a local developer and first of all, I think that's what you've done here today. First of all, Amanda did an incredible job of trying to clarify, I think, some rather tough issues and I really think you did a great job and just your being here to listen and try to be involved with this is important. I want, I have a couple of general comments. One is I very much support, generally speaking, the comments made by the gentleman with the, there and Michael Weiner. I have two specific comments that I think are important among, I could say a lot of other things, but I'm the owner and developer of the Worthing Place Complex in downtown Delray Beach. It's fourth and, excuse me, second Atlantic. The city allows 30 units an acre density. Normally we have, frankly, with the help of Michael, we have 93 units an acre density. And I think that if you went past the building, you would think it probably has 10 units an acre. Point being that I think a lot of this is about smart growth and trying to make sure the developer is careful with how they design a project, how it fits. We happen to be so lucky having that little park in front of us, somewhere to like Dewey Park here. So we took advantage of the fact the building didn't come right up vertically. There was a kind of an organized way that it stepped back and I think it really helps the eye to see something that's frankly fairly dense, but it doesn't look dense. The comment that Michael made about, in fact, our usage, we have 217 units, 15,000 feet of retail. Our actual parking usage is less than 1.2 parking spaces per unit and we have a heavy dosage of two-bedroom and three-bedroom units. So I really don't think parking is that kind of issue at all. One thing I would just ask you to really consider long and hard because it's fundamentally, this city's on a roll. It's taken a long time because of stable leadership from people like Mayor Penzeraga and some of the others to get where you are. This is a city that's looked upon favorably by developers, by people wanting to come to South Florida as opposed to other communities. So I would suggest you really think long and hard about the issue of creating a moratorium. It's a, it's not a good word and it's not something politically, I think you just need to be careful with it. Figure out a way to do some of this without doing that. It's not good, honestly. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other in-person public speakers? Now is the time to make it known. Please approach the podium and inform a line. Again, this is the last call for in-person public speakers.
Good afternoon. Little bit of history here. I really have an aversion to coming up to this microphone. It's not my forte and I, so it's an important issue. I felt it was anyhow. First off, I want to thank all of you commissioners for your service in this post-pandemic world. I know they, it's sometimes very stressful for you trying to do the right thing for the city and you know, you guys did not sign up to be abused and I certainly would encourage you to take full advantage of your powers to keep things on a even keel here. I, you know, I did want to just discuss a couple of historical points about Boynton Beach that I just wanted to, you know, there were some comments made, I mean, number one, about a vote back in the eighties and I just wanted to touch on that briefly, you know. Boynton Beach back in the eighties was largely controlled by one particular neighborhood and I won't mention the neighborhood, but at that time, I believe the mayor was actually a resident of this neighborhood. And there was, the Home Depot project was being considered and there was tremendous pushback from this neighborhood. It was a not-in-my-backyard mentality. And that spilled over into the city commission and they attempted to stop Home Depot from being built because of the residents. And that I think was the trade winds lawsuit. Don't quote me on that. And I thought it was somewhere around a $12 million judgment against the city. Ultimately, Home Depot was built. I mean, hey, all the jobs that it's brought to the city, that's a beautiful thing. You know, going back even further than that, you know, I think the not-in-my-backyard mentality, I mean, it's Boynton Beach, I sometimes think of it as a city of missed opportunities. You know, we go back to when Addison Meisner came to town, he wanted to build the Boynton Beach Hotel and Club and the residents ran him out of town. I mean, shortly thereafter, we were, you know, we were broke. And so we wound up allowing Ocean Ridge to break off and, and become their own city. You know, there was a reference to, you know, Delray Beach. You know, unfortunately, we do not have the tax base that Delray has. We need, we need development. You know, just a short time ago, you guys granted the fire department 72 on or 24 on, 72 off. I mean, hey, that's, that's your decision. I'm not second guessing you. That's above my pay grade, but what I'm going to say to you is, how are we going to pay for that? You know, actually, Fire Station One was supposed to be demolished. That was supposed to be shut down and the only reason is because we felt we needed it with the Town Square project, which, you know, now we've got $110 million City Hall, we got to pay for it. So please, please, before you, you know, consider, I mean, it's just high-density nodes that we have here.
Sir, if you could just wrap it up.
Yes, yes. You know, you've got a beautiful staff at the CRA with Twee. I mean, she's a licensed architect, you know, don't tie her hands, please. You know, give this a lot of thought. Anyhow, I hope you would just leave matters as it is. Thank you very much.
Thank, thank you for your comments. Thank you, everyone who spoke. Before we move on, I know that we have public comments virtually via email.
Yes, I received three public comments that I'll write into the record.
All right.
The first one, "Good morning, Board. My name is Mark Meyer. I'm the president of INCA. I would be there this morning, but unfortunately I'm under the weather. Thank you for opening this topic to the people, to the public for discussion. Members of INCA have discussed the concept of restricting heights and we are in support of the height restrictions. We think it is in our best interest to limit the height. Many members are looking for a maximum structure height of three to five stories. We have factored in safety considerations, example, average fire truck ladder heights, traffic density and intensity, FAR, flooding proneness of the CRA, public infrastructure and environmental factors, example, impacts of migratory birds and heat island effects. We understand that three to five stories may not be able to be accommodated. However, INCA members support the general reduction of building height allowance for development within the city. Also, members of INCA would like an impervious surface area requirement for developers to have some onsite drainage capacity, perhaps via bioswales, rain gardens, et cetera. Thank you for the presentation and the discussion opportunity. Please feel free to contact me with any inquiries." The second one is from Ace Tilton Radcliffe, P O Box 696, Boynton Beach, Florida 33425. "In this excellent presentation, I don't see anything discussed about the way the height of buildings affects the local bird population. Of course, this conversation centers Boynton Beach residents, but part of what makes our city wonderful is the diversity of our wildlife. South Florida provides home to an incredible number of migratory and local birds. Every year in the U.S., nearly 1 billion birds collide with glass and most of the fatalities happen in buildings well under the height we're discussing. In New York City, lawmakers recently passed a bill to update building code with design and construction requirements to make buildings safer for birds using avian-friendly materials. In conversations like this, it's necessary that we think about our influence on the birds and other animals that live with us. What will Boynton Beach be doing to ensure that our code, especially for tall buildings, minimizes impact on our wildlife as well as our residents?" And the third comment is from Ramona Young. "The commission appears to be limiting the growth of the city. There are 80,000 people here and growing. Limiting growth will prohibit taxable income. Broad-spectrum feasibility studies need to be done to incorporate the concerns of all."
That was it?
That's it.
All right, thank you. If we have concluded all of the public comments, we're going to return back to the commission for any final comments or question. We can begin with whomever is ready. Commissioner Turkin.
I have one more question for staff. The LVR in 2017, can you elaborate more on that? Because I heard a comment about the original CRA plan and is that a change to the plan? Because I see here that it's adding MU4.
Yes, so the consolidated plan in 2016 did a few things. It consolidated the existing plans. It allowed for recommendations to be made in areas that there were no plans, for example, the industrial area. And then it consolidated overall plans. It also restructured our mixed-use zoning districts to add one more level between what used to be MU3 and mixed-use core. It inserted MU4 so that heights had another level less than the 150.
Okay, so the original plan was not 150 feet?
The original plan went up to 150 feet.
Prior to 2016?
Yes.
So 2006 was when it was changed from 100, 150 feet? What I'm getting at is, the plan has been changed, right, in the last 20 years?
So yes, the plans have changed and grown as a response to trends and vision development.
Right.
However, the 150-feet's first adoption was in 2002. Everything from 2002 to today has been about creating distribution levels between 0 feet and 150 feet.
Okay, thanks for clarifying that. You know, a lot of feedback from people that probably don't live in the city. And so I encourage my commission again, the people elected us. We need to go back, I think Cortland said it the best, and he left already, was that we need to see what the vision is for this TOD. Because I personally don't want a train station in my backyard. You know, that's, that's right down the street from me. And I know my neighbors don't want it. You know, I know that they're afraid for their kids. And what I do know is that we were elected by people who came out to the Vols and voted for us, not for people who donated to our campaigns. And so I want to make sure that, yes, we will be termed out at some point. But when we make a decision that is gonna impact the community, we make it with our hearts, knowing that we can sleep at night. Because, you know, we're all gonna be out of this seat. But one day, we're gonna have to live with whatever decision we make to uphold our own integrity. And so I think that's important. You know, I think we have a lot to discuss. And again, you know, Mayor, you hit on the head, this is very complicated. And so I don't think this is gonna be, I think we maybe need another workshop meeting or another meeting with staff as well. I definitely want to sit down with Amanda and Michael to go over our options. I don't want to halt development, but again, I don't think that 150 feet is necessary. I don't even think 100 feet is necessary. We can get it done. I just don't want the comments of greed to sway anybody's answers and votes forward.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Commissioner Kelly?
I really just had, I think I made my comments earlier. My, I really, I want to thank the residents of the city who came out today. Obviously, this is something that is not just important to us and shouldn't just be important to us, but it's important to the residents, too. So it is important going forward that we're, that we're considering them, the residents, and we are the residents as well. And going forward, because this, this will be my city for as long as I am here and well after me. So I agree that, you know, we have a lot to consider. And I, you know, sometimes, you know, we have, I feel like we have these meetings and we're speaking to an empty room. So I'm happy to see that residents came out today. It's obviously something that is important to them, and it's, and so it's important to us. So I just, I thank the residents for coming out today, for staff, for the thorough work, Amanda and Adam to put this together. It's very helpful, but like Commissioner Turkin said, I think it's a start to more conversations and more discussions to be had. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Cruz?
Yeah, same. Wish we would have seen more people from the public today to really tell us how they feel about it. I do try to keep in touch with my constituents in my district specifically. But it is important to understand the entirety of Boynton Beach and what the residents of Boynton Beach want. So that's definitely important to me as well. It is a complex issue. As I said, I'll continue to speak to staff, the attorney, and constituents, and residents of all districts, really, to see how we can best move forward.
All right. And I think my colleagues said it best. Thank you to everybody. Thank you to staff. It's Saturday after all. Thank you to the residents and everyone who came. We did learn a lot. This was very informative, and I'm grateful for the experience. So if there's nothing else, we have a motion to adjourn?
I moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye? All right, motion passes. The meeting is adjourned.